I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this excellent flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Welcome to meeting with the informal everybody's here to speak. Now it's time to do it. Where being none, we'll start the work session. And, uh, items included in this work session are intended for opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take any formal action on matters presented at a work session, but make direct staff place items relating to the matter on future agenda agendas for formal consideration. This would be, uh, murals.
Oh, sure. Um, so, murals has been, um, a project that the Main Street Board has been interested in for several years now. Um, the Main Street Advisory Board did give direction to Tori once she was hired as our Main Street Manager to make murals, one of the projects they're working on. Um, and Main Street has our design committee, so that kind of fell in their lap. Um, we've been working on some things on the staff backend. We've had a great design committee that's been very excited and going out in the community, um, having several different conversations with different groups, um, doing research with other communities and how they do murals. Um, and so, staff has prepared today a proposed mural procedure that was in your packet that we'll go over later. Um, and then, we also have a PowerPoint presentation that Lynn Myers, who's our, um, acting Main Street Board Chairman and also in the Design Committee, has come up with. And then, I believe, uh, Council and Ballinger also has a presentation. So, we'll let them go over it and then kind of come back to the procedure and kind of see, once we all agree on everything, how we move forward. So.
So, take it away?
Yes, and Lynn, you have that clicker right in front of you that should go through your PowerPoint.
Alright, so, um, what we want the murals to do is to depict the history of Nacogdoches and what we love about the city. And I want to point out some key words in here, carefully curated murals. We don't want this to be just a mishmash of different art styles, different stories. Well, we do want different stories, but we want it to somehow have continuity and to look like it flows together, like there was some thought put behind all of this to tell the story of Nacogdoches. And I'm sure you've been in cities where they have a lot of murals and they're all sort of competing against each other. It's almost what I call visual blight. And that's not what we're interested in because these murals are all going to be in historic downtown. We don't want to have so many and so, so much competition between the, the colors and the styles and everything that it's overwhelming and unattractive. So, what we're thinking is that these murals would be kind of like a storybook where each page tells a chapter of the history of Nacogdoches. And, um, that each page would be uplifting and educational and welcoming to visitors as well as people who live here. What you're gonna see today in this presentation is just some photographs that we pulled from different places, just to give you ideas of the kinds of themes that we're thinking about. There's nothing in here that is set in concrete. These, we just thought it would be easier for all of you to see some visuals that would help to explain what we're thinking of. But by no means, this is not the final, the final for any one of these murals. So, uh, we're calling this little effort Brushing Up Mac, and it is a Main Street initiative.
You should be able to do the right click.
This one?
Make sure it's turned on on the side. Here we go.
There we go. Okay, so I just kind of threw this in. This was done by an artist. It's a poster, but you can see where she took, uh, an old photograph and did an artistic rendering of it. And I, I just wanted you to see that these, these are kinds of, the kinds of things that I have in the back of my mind where it's semi-realistic, but it's done in an artistic and, um, interesting way. Okay, so this one right here? Alright, so, we've walked around town and we have come up with about twelve different locations that we think could host a mural. Not all of these will pan out, uh, or quite a number of them where we have not yet talked to the owners, uh, and they may not agree. There's one in particular that, uh, is pending HPLC.
HLPC.
The Historic Group, um, because after the stucco is removed, the brick may be in an old condition and we won't be able to do anything with it. So, that's all I'm gonna say about that and we'll go through each one of these individually. Okay, so, I think this may be an old graphic of what's considered downtown, but you can see the ones that we're talking about in a placement of them. The ones with the stars are where the, uh, owners have already said, yeah, uh, you know, we'd be happy to have a mural there. And the red dots are where it's still up in the air. I threw this one in as a bonus. This is not really a mural, I mean, we call it that, but it is, um, it's like a billboard. I mean, it's advertising Coca-Cola. But the reason I wanted to show it is that, um, this mural we all love, and it certainly appears in a lot of publicity for Nacogdoches, but it's fading and it's peeling and it needs to be refreshed. So, Brandon, is Brandon here?
He's running.
Brandon!
Sorry, I'll lean back.
With your new hair. Brandon actually went to the distributor of Coca-Cola and got them to agree to pay for the refreshment of this particular mural. And so, that is probably gonna start as soon as the weather cools off. Dixie is going to be doing it and that is really, uh, an interesting fact because her father was the one who did the original mural. So, we're keeping it in the family. The only thing that we're going to pay for would be a plaque. Each one of the murals will have a small plaque and on the plaque it will have the name of the artist and the name of all the donors for that particular project. Okay, this is the Impact Wall, uh, if you're familiar with the Impact Store on, uh, this lane. This wall is also fading. We had talked to the lady that runs the Impact Store. She talked to the owner and they agreed that we could do something. She wanted it to, uh, be related to children because of the Impact Business, but they're going out of business. Um, she has some, some health issues, so they're closing October the twenty-fourth. So, now we'll need to renegotiate with the owner. We have no idea who he's gonna put in there. But, um, we thought this might be a great location for, uh, our African-American idea. And in meeting with, uh, a group of African-Americans who have given us, uh, concepts and, you know, discussions about what we might put on the mural, they said that they would like to highlight, uh, who they consider to be thirty, um, pioneers. And these are all people who were involved in education, probably the ministry in civil rights. I mean, it's a whole group of people that, that we all admire. And so, why not, you know, put them up there? And I don't know if, if we would do a headline, but, I mean, I just kind of threw this together. These are not the people. This is actually part of a mural that was in, um, I believe, North Carolina. But I wanted to put it on there just so you would have a visual idea of what we think. Okay, this is the Barham Building, which is sort of kitty corner to the brewery. Uh, George Barham, I talked to him well over a year ago and he's very much in favor of having a mural on there. Because it is kind of in the area where we have the brewery and, and, uh, some shops and restaurants. We thought maybe, um, highlighting dining, shopping, playing, even the hotel. You know, kind of an entertainment theme. So, I just went through what we have and, I mean, we've got tons of old photographs of old shops and, uh... In the middle is the very first food truck that was in Nacogdoches. It's, uh, Will Risper's food truck, Hoptamale's. We thought that would be fun to have in there. I threw in a photo of a guy who's playing two saxophones at once. You know, we can go through all the old photographs and find images that we want to portray, but then, of course, it will be up to the artist to render it. I mean, it, it might be rendered as though it's a, a street with the shops and things all along the street. But that just will give you an idea of what we've been discussing for that particular wall. And that, by the way, is a beautiful wall. This is the Sloan Building. We haven't talked to, uh, John Sloan yet about this. That's, uh, the wall where, uh, Cowboy Jacks is, or was. And because it would be one of the very first murals you'd see coming from the east, um, and because there's going to be a Mexican restaurant in there, we thought, okay, why not, you know, kind of lean into El Camino Real? It's right on El Camino Real. And a potential theme would be the early Spanish explorers. So, it's just an idea that may, that may not happen, but, um, I think it'd be kind of fun to highlight the early Spanish. Okay, this is Johnson Furniture Wall. It's the one that has the mural on it now, uh, which is, uh, fading and peeling. And so, it needs to be redone. Um, we thought it would be an ideal wall to have some kind of welcome to historic downtown Nacogdoches. It's kind of a, what do I want to say, a cornerstone getting into historic downtown. And maybe throw in the flags, you know, highlighting our illustrious history. Okay, this one is, uh, across Main Street, so this is Johnson Furniture on the, um, facing north. No, facing west on North Street. Um, and this one has, uh, a tree or two in front of it and it has some vegetation and there's also a sculpture there. So, we thought maybe this would be, uh, an ideal location to highlight the Garden Capital of Texas and, uh, do some kind of floral, doesn't have to be those trees, but some kind of floral arrangement with, um, all, you know, flowers that are known to grow in this area and that, uh, Nacogdoches is famous for. This one, I believe Randy has started talking to Dixie about doing some work on, so we may have her do this mural or we just may take it out to bid and see what we come up with. Uh, we have a lot of garden cloaks in Nacogdoches and, um, I've already reached out to the one I belong to and I think that they would be willing to support this. Not that they have a lot of money, but they would certainly, uh, help us. You know, we may be able to get donations from hanging stores or whatever. We'll hit up anybody, anyone who's, who can fob up, uh, there. Okay, so. Next is the, um, McLean Building. This is the one that we said, we're not sure we'll be able to put a mural on because of the brick. But if we are able to, what we thought would be fun to do is a series of, um, kind of like postcards and cover some of the brightening rates that we have here in Nacogdoches. Uh, like the first oil well is, uh, in Nacogdoches Colony and the, you know, Stoneport is probably the first substantial building, the university. So, there are all kinds of things we can put on there. And feel free to interrupt me at any time. Alright, this is the wall of, uh, side of the, uh, old Art House or the Cole Art Gallery. We have not yet talked to the university about this because of the changes with the university and kind of unknown as to what they're gonna do with that building. But we all know the story about the Marx Brothers and the mule that interrupted their, um, their act. So, we thought that would be really a fun visual thing to put on there. Okay, here we are, another Johnson Wall.
Always wrong to walk down. You better warn any of it, you know.
So, this is the wall that faces south, so it's just around the corner from the existing mural that we talked about a little while ago. This is the one that has all the logos on it. And, um, we thought this would, might, might be a, uh, ideal location to do something on the Caddos. And, uh, we have already talked to, uh, a Caddo artist who's very interested. Um, he even proposed, uh, kind of depicting a Caddo story about how the flood came and the Caddos had to move their huts to higher ground. And that they had some kind of alligator, whatever, that helped them to, to do all of that. So, it would be colorful, but it would also be representative of Caddo life. So, I'm kind of excited about that one. That would be really good. He probably would be able to start right after the first of the year. He's, um, at least turned me on to him and he's, he's very famous. He's got his work in museums all across the country. Okay, this is kind of a new one. There is, uh, just down the street from the Methodist Church is their admin building. And, uh, were you able to talk to?
Yeah, I spoke with the assistant, uh, minister. She said she's going to bring the idea before the board and get back with me. I left her card, so she's gonna be, uh, talking to the board about it and seeing if that's something they would, uh, would like to do.
It's a fairly good-sized wall and it's right there along North Street. So, we thought maybe, uh, we could do a montage of some of the early churches and steeples and things.
I don't know if you know this, but several churches in Nacogdoches are the very first church in Texas.
Really?
Did you know that?
No.
No.
So, are several of them. I was just shocked that came up in our, when we were interviewing for people who wanted to serve on the different boards. So, I think, how many did we, four or five, that were the first?
First of their donation.
First of their donation.
Wow.
Wow, in the whole state. So, that's, that's great.
Yeah.
We like these things with red.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I just thought.
That's great.
So, but that would help us to choose what.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, this is the, uh, south side of the Landmark Building. And, uh, one of the things we talked about here was maybe showing different forms of transportation and, you know, people that are headed into the downtown square is that. And we might even, you know, try to depict what the downtown square looked like because we have photographs that show it was one heck of a busy place.
You will?
Yeah, lots, lots of cars there, lots of horses and buggies and, you know, it's quite the center of commerce.
Even in the sixties and in the late fifties, uh, it was, this year then, than it is now.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It was, just kind of had, um, commerce and trade along that way down there.
Mm-hmm. This is the County Annex Building. This would be the West Wall, so I guess this would be the very first wall you would see if you were coming from the west on the twenty-one. Obviously, we would need to get county approval to do anything. But we thought maybe doing something based on, uh, railroads or the logging industry would be appropriate there. We have the railroad tracks nearby. But, you know, logging is such a big part of Nacogdoches' history. I think it'd be nice to highlight that. This one we just threw in the other day as I was, uh, there objecting to my tax appraisal. But, uh, this is the wall, the tax office is in there and there's some attorneys. This wall faces west. Obviously, we have to get approval, but it has good visibility. It's right there by the farmer's market. One of the visuals that we ran across a long time ago and we absolutely love is this old photo of these guys going out to fight a fire. And, um, you know, the old fire truck and look at the guy in the suit in the front seat. We figured he must be the mayor. But, I mean, it would, it's a fun thing and it tells a story, so why not have some fun?
Can I have a picture of it?
Yeah.
While on there, Paul? I would like to say something. It's a lot and Brandon was speaking about commerce and, and.
Oh.
One of the, it was, uh, through the vegetables and through that it's a lot.
Oh.
And, I mean, it was, it was, it was, I mean, it's about a hundred feet.
Do we have some old photographs you think of that?
I know we have some from the sixty, the nineteen sixties, um, and I'm sure there's probably some other ones. We haven't done research at the Essex Research Center yet, but I know the Historic Site staff, we probably have three or four photos from the nineteen fifties to probably the seventies. Um, and I'm sure there's some before that.
That'd be great.
I'll tell you something else, just, just for clearance.
Sure.
When I was a kid, you know, there was no such things like drawings. So, uh, during election time, it was this huge top board. You remember that photo here? And they'd put it on the square and they liked, when Cyclops Box came in, they would have all the votes tally and that's how they would register, uh, their votes. And that's how you found out. And there would be just a big gathering downtown on election night. Going off the top board and somebody adding it up. That's, that's.
Wow, and that was in the store. Cool.
Yeah, and I did it in the fifty series, I remember going.
Wonder if there's any picture? Wow. That would be interesting.
Uh-huh, I love these old stories. Okay, uh, this is my last slide and I just threw this in to show you, these are some historic murals that are in San Angelo. Uh, and you can see that they were depicting different aspects of, um, city life there. I, I'm pretty sure these were all done by the same artist. If not, they were very carefully curated so that they all kind of have the same look and feel. But I, I think they're very tasteful and fun. Alright, that's it, I'm done.
Comment? Are you in?
Yes.
Good job, pass it around.
Young Mac Wall.
Yes.
She has stayed and she likes to, uh, come and play with children. I was, let me say something like, uh, I'm on TBR two with this.
Yeah.
Old church in New York. The old house grew there on the same campus and made a lot of coffee, the church.
And keep it with the children.
If it's possible.
Yeah. I guess.
I know she was related with the castle and, uh, she was, uh, having a, uh, conversation.
Can I say one thing before we move forward? Um, so the, the designs and the ideas, this is something that the Design Committee has worked very hard on and come up with. These designs and ideas haven't been, um, brought to the Main Street Board for approval, endorsement, anything like that. This is kind of our Design Committee's working document. Um, and so, with our process in Main Street, ideally, they'd be brought to the Main Street Advisory Board, um, for approval or for endorsement and then, um, go forward with our mural process that we hope to do today. So, there's been no money spent on this at this point. We don't have an artist engaged. We haven't done any formal agreements with any property owners or anything like that. I just want to make sure everybody knew we were in the process.
Is it purely the ideas of?
They're correct. And I keep thinking, maybe with all that transportation, maybe we should have a, um, electronic, electric car charging station there. You like my?
Hide it in a corner.
Anyway, so I'm gonna give a little bit of background to why we're here today too. And that's because, um, so many people had so many different ideas and so many different questions. I thought it would be helpful to make sure everybody's on the same page. And, um, I am not an artist. I actually have painted one picture and I think it's pretty good, but that's it. And, um, I love art. I spent, I went to college in Washington DC and every Saturday morning I would go to the National Gallery on my own and just go through the, the gallery for years. But anyway, that's my, the extent of my art. I love art and, so, you all are the experts and you have done so much work and, uh, put your heart and soul into this and I personally want to thank you all for everything you've done. And so, I wanted to say that, um, what I hope to do with this is make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward, that there are no hitches, that if we, if, to figure out when we all need to get together just to brainstorm or if we don't need to get together, what's our involvement, who's? And so, for that process, I sat down with Robert and with Gail and we talked a lot and we wrote things and I sat down with Lynn and with Tori and listened. So, what I'm gonna show you is what I think I've heard. So, it's not my ideas or my questions. It's things that I think I've heard and that I think that we probably have consensus on. So, my whole purpose here is to see what we have consensus on and maybe there might be some ideas to help smooth this process. Because what I heard is there's so many different, like you go to HPLC and then you go to Main Street and then you go to, and you have your committee and then where does the council fit in? So, I'm hoping we can kind of streamline this a little bit. And also, there are questions about money, who gets the money? What's the, you know, what are, what are the laws related to it? So, I also visited, by the way, with our wonderful attorney, Jared Baker, to ask Kinson questions and to bring him up to date. So, I'm hoping at the end of this, we'll, there may be some things that we don't agree and we can put them to the side to resolve, but to see what we do agree on so that we will have, I'll show you what I've got here, of principles and philosophies, that we'll agree on the principles and philosophies, that we agree on a broad approval process. What, what, um, the one you have here, that Jessica's talking about, is a very, very specific internal approval process. I'm talking about a, a broader approval po, a process that includes the council, the dollars and all that. So, approval process, pretty basic, funding, some questions about funding that I heard. And then, finally, the other thing that I did hear when I was talking with Robert, Gail, Lynn and Tori is there's a real interest, I'm gonna go through these one at a time, so you don't have to, you know, I'm gonna go back through these slides. But that we can, that there's a real interest in getting some things done by October because Main Street, what is it called, the Main Street?
Texas Downtown Conference.
Texas Downtown Conference is coming here in October. What can we do, what can we agree on that can be done and try, and what, how can we smooth that process? So, I'm gonna go back and, uh, I, I just hope that gave, gave you a, a little bit of perspective on what I'm trying to do here. So, okay, so I called in and, and I couldn't read your PowerPoint, Lynn, or I would have had more specifics. I, it just didn't come up on my computer today very well, or I would have had the specifics. And Jessica, I'm gonna ask you, if you hear things that aren't in there, right here, you know, these principles? There are some principles she wrote down here that we need to include. So, if you could take the notes and, and then I will. So, this is what I heard, that we want positive murals, that this is, we want to put a positive face forward, nice to look at, that people will want to see again and that will be welcoming. So, I'm gonna stop at each one and make sure we have agreement. Do we all have agreement on that, this thirty? You all, I'm looking at you city council people too. Alright, type what? You stop me if you disagree on any one of these, okay?
I don't disagree, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, as far as on the staff end, when we say positive, nice to look at, are there parameters y'all are hoping to have on that? Because I think the positive, nice to look at is, is different depending on who's.
Let me, let me stop you right there. That will be up to, th, these are the broadest statements and then later on, you can help interpret those. But as long as we agree on those, that they're, it's something positive, that we don't want negative. But as long as we agree on those, that they're, it's something positive, that we don't want negative images that it, because I know there was some discussion about that, but we're all in agreement. We want positive things, right? And, okay. Historically accurate, if we're going to have it up there, we want it to be accurate. We don't want to paint something that is not true, that is an inaccurate thing, that highlights our rich and diverse history of these things that you're looking at, that highlights current creativity. I heard that. And highlights the beauty of the city, the region, state, and encourages exploration or something else, is probably a better word. Any of those, are we, any of those a problem, or?
What is current creativity?
I don't know. It's, it's a, that was from somebody, and they said, as long as we can be a little creative, I know. So I'll give you an example from what you said, one of your slides said, this, we want to make it a little more creative, whatever it was, or the, or the picture. I don't remember which slide it was.
Was it the first one, rendering right here?
Yeah, yeah, the first one, yeah. So, so she could put together some things, and it was more creative. So that, that, I don't think, we want to inhibit that. But you're, again, Jessica, this will have to be, you know, your idea of creativity and mine, I know are different because you happen to be in a creative, you know, field. Okay, so any other things? That's a good question. So you're going to explore that a little bit more, Jessica, you and your staff, and we'll come, we'll bring that back. And you're going to also explore what positive means and all that, so. Okay, any other questions on this? Are we good? Are we all good on this?
I'm good.
Chad, you're good? You're.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yes, so far.
Okay, so far, okay. And this part, I wasn't sure I heard right, that it should relate to Nacogdoches, to East Texas, or Texas. Are we, I think I heard that from you, Robert. Is that correct?
Maybe, I don't know, but I, I agree with it for sure.
So, I mean, so I loved this, an example of this is Lynn was talking about having flowers. Well, they should be flowers that are here. They shouldn't be, you know, flowers that you find in California, you know? Or, you know, poinsettias don't grow here, or, you know, something like that. Or do they? Maybe they do. I don't know, about a florist either, or gardener. But anyway, are we good on that? Is that? Yes, we're all in it. So what I'm hoping to do is write this into a document.
Brandon. Yeah, I, first of all, I want to say I like all your ideas.
Okay.
I think they're terrific. And it's far from my first impression when I went to one board meeting. And I didn't know what I was doing. I was just listening. But, I mean, I didn't, I just was there, and, and that was, you know, and I tell my students, I've told people before, when I say paint the wall green, there's a hundred and forty-seven different shades of green.
At least, there's more than that.
Yes, well, and, no, thank you. But, but I mean, to see it actually, what your vision is, is really nice.
Thanks.
So I just want you to know that I'm not here to tear things up. I like this idea.
And, and actually, the way, in my experience, the way to make sure we're all together is to do something like this, to put it out there and make sure we have full agreement on the parameters. Now later on, we might get to something, you know, like gambling in Nacogdoches. Maybe you want to put a gambling thing, and, you know, and somebody else may think, well, that's not really a positive thing, but we can work through whatever. But, but, but mostly, if we get these parameters set, I think we're in good, in really good shape.
So are you good?
Which is so far, that's what I'm saying, so far, this is just, you just need to have. Okay, and, and I wrote down, and our approach will always be collaborative. I would like to settle on that. So, yeah.
We're, we're talking about the last slide.
Okay.
Where, where it incorporates Texas. That's a pretty big area.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, hopefully, so I have it in order. I would, I think maybe we should all agree, we really want it to relate to Nacogdoches.
Absolutely.
It could relate to East Texas if we decide something, and it could relate to Texas, but that's in order.
Okay.
So, so, and if you want to take off Texas and East Texas, we can.
Like, if we do something with El Camino Real, that's kind of pulling in the rest of the city.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really, I tell you, you can, you can take some of those off. I'm just trying to.
I believe that's, that's the right word, city regions.
So, so Jessica, when we write this down, if you could put in that order of priority, that would help. Is that okay? So in that priority, then that makes really good sense, okay. All right, any other questions on this first? I only have a few slides, so it's.
It's good.
Okay, so then the next one is, I, and I personally put this up there, and we all talked about this. I hope our approach will always be collaborative. We're in this together, we're the council, the staff, the leaders, the artists. Sometimes people think I'm just me, but actually, I have hundreds of people who call me and ask me questions and to tell me, and it's helpful to be able to set our parameters and to think about them, too. And we will work together to resolve any differences and find solutions. I would like us to agree on that. We're all in agreement?
Yes.
Or as they say in East Texas, agreeance? Are we all in agreement?
I'll tell you one.
Yes, sir.
One thing you can add to that is, if you want to put like under nothing political, but nothing advertising.
They do that in college, yeah.
But, but I think like Coca-Cola is a, a Johnson's.
No, I don't want my name under the top.
That's a historic ghost mural.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's.
Yeah, we have to keep that.
It's kind of grandfathering.
We, we, we talk about, I got a whole line name on there here. If we're a whole big fair up, they know we're talking, we're going to Google it. Drive right to it, but I didn't know my name when my daddy, anybody from the seventies.
That's where you have that.
Well, some of them are really historic. I kind of like the, I like the mayor. I just think it looks historic, so. I mean, I'll let it if you want, but it would not be wrong.
I, I can care less about, these old bar buildings, I do not know them all.
Well, maybe we could, can we capture them to, you all are the artists. Is there a way to?
There are some murals that are considered ghost murals where they have reached a state past, where they're too far deteriorated, and it kind of does more harm to the history of the mural to renew it or paint over it. So there are some murals in downtown that could be considered that. There's one on the side of Dolly's that is extremely faded.
Yeah.
That's a ghost mural. So there are some that we do have that are considered historic, that we can keep.
Yeah.
And they're the advertising.
Yeah, that's more of an advertisement that is on that side of the building. So for, I don't know how old the murals are on your building, Mayor, so if they are that old, I think the typical is fifty or sixty years, but at the same time.
Well, maybe we can leave that discretion to the, you know, to the committee. I mean, we don't want to go out and, and we definitely don't want to spend city dollars to, you know, have Catherine Bellinger, you know, whatever.
Or Mayor.
Yeah.
And as far as the advertising, is the concern not advertising a specific product? Because some of our ideas early on was like shop, eat, drink, downtown Nacogdoches. So advertising downtown is like a destination versus advertising Hotel Fredonia, Coca-Cola.
Right.
Coca-Cola, hot stuff downtown. That's, that's brilliant. I mean, I did that, but as far as my buildings, I did not want Johnson's furniture long.
I have a question about the whole thing. I know in antique restoration, if you paint it where it looks brand new, you reduce the value. Repainting Coca-Cola signs, is that going to reduce the attractiveness of it, even though it'd be fresh and new? But it's an antique right now, which is.
It's, it's not truly an antique. It's painted in the eighties. It was, it's what's called a ghost mural. Coca-Cola paid a artist, all of the United States, to paint these ghost murals to make them look like they were real old. That was painted in eighty-six or eighty-seven, I think, so.
I didn't know. Just ask.
But that, that look, that antique look, that vintage look, is, especially in Nacogdoches, being the oldest town in Texas, kind of gives it a different feeling, as opposed to a brand new painted mural that doesn't look vintage. I think that's where it's coming from.
Yeah.
And if they can keep that style, you know, instead of brand new sign.
I don't know, it's going to be identical. It's just there's some areas where the paint is peeling off, that needs to be addressed. There's one here at the top where there's rust that's come down.
Is it possible that you conceal it with a clear coat?
Yeah.
And freeze.
Nowadays.
Some of it, yeah.
There's a fellow, there's a fellow in Julia, Texas, that paints those murals like that, Coca-Cola and Dr. Pepper. And he, the brand new wall, and he makes them look old, just by this, the way he brushes it. It makes it look like an old, deteriorating mural. And the seals, they last forever.
Do we want to put in there that we're trying to achieve a vintage look or not? I don't know if we're trying to do it or maintain. Is that something?
Too much students in nineteen eighties, if we're, they were born in two thousand five.
Is, well, is that something we want to have as one of our, our elements that we want to have?
I, I would say maybe a vintage look if possible.
Okay, well, let's write that down there, on there. Maintain a vintage look if possible.
And that would probably be, be most likely specific to the Coca-Cola mural.
Right.
As opposed to all of them.
So I'm trying to keep what is for all, so we don't need, if we don't need that on there, let's, let's not do. Okay, and one other one that, that I was told, somebody called me right before the meeting, Molly did, and he said, make sure we include, don't paint on the historic unpainted bricks. So that, that needs to be written on that.
Yes, and that is actually part of our current city ordinance. It falls under our chapter fifty of Historic Preservation, that HLVC regulates the types of surfaces that can be painted in our historic districts. So if you, and the spots that Lynn has picked out, she and I have discussed, because if it's a brick that's already painted, it can be painted again because it's essentially maintenance. If it's a brick that is not painted, we don't allow it, just because then you, you really can't get that paint off. And it does seal the brick in a way it's not supposed to be sealed. So that is currently in your ordinance.
So I, I think it'd be really helpful to include it here in the overview of what we're. Now, before I move to the next slide, Lynn, you had several things on your first page. I want to see if any of these, you know, need to be up there. I think, I think a, a couple do. Carefully curated probably needs to be on there, where, that we're carefully, and the principles that, that don't, that these will all be careful, carefully, carefully curated. There would be design continuity. And I think the others, look on your first page.
Yeah.
And see if there's anything else you want included in these, in these, in this policy overview thing, principles and philosophy. So we'll include carefully curated.
Yeah, I think it's okay. I mean, I, I'm a real big one on having design continuity. And part of that is going to be that each mural will have a plaque with the name of the artist and all of the donors for that particular mural. And also, each mural will have a QR code. And the QR code will give further background on the mural.
Let's put that there, too. Each mural will have a QR. So here's what I added. I want to see that we're on the same page, Jessica.
Which page are we on?
Still on page one, or page, they're only four.
She was referencing Lynn's first page to make sure all this was in the.
So the things we added were that we're not going to paint on historic, unpainted bricks, or however you want to put that, because you already have, know the ordinance, that they'll, they'll all be carefully curated. Then there will be design continuity, and each mural will have a QR code.
Yes, as well as artist credit and donor credit plaque.
Okay.
You're wanting the QR code to have the history of the mural, of the, of the subject of the mural?
I'm wondering whatever you want, so put it on there.
Those QR, QR codes, as opposed to them being, they're, they're going to be on the plaque?
Yeah.
Or can they be changed over time to accommodate any new information coming in? Because if you were to paint it on the mural, or if you were to engrave it, or however you want to do it in a permanent fashion on top of the.
Should be a sticker.
Should be a sticker or something, or something nice, I don't know.
Yeah.
On the plaque?
I can't imagine trying to.
Yeah, and we, the city actually pays for a service where we have reprogrammable QR codes.
Oh, perfect.
And so if for some reason we direct to a website that goes out of business, then I can go on the backend and redirect that QR code somewhere else.
Perfect.
We have to use that a lot, because we have a lot of websites that go out of business and things change. So we wanted to make sure that if we're printing QR codes on anything, that we're not having to reprint things constantly.
Worded and whatever. Okay, now I'm going to go to the second page, because Randy's ready. Okay, so this approval process is a broad one. And the other one you see there is very, very specific. I'm trying to make sure we agree on the broad principles, and also I'm trying to avoid any further, any issues down the line, make sure we're all on the same track. So, one, we want as simple as possible. That's it. I mean, that's, it comes from the bureaucrat. Number two, our policies and ordinances are outlined in advance, except for what we choose to do by October, or whatever we say we can't do ahead of time that we agree on. But, but we agree on the policies, ordinances of everything. And here's, these are just questions I wrote down. Do we need policies, ordinances for private buildings in the historic neck? And we don't need to decide just right now, by the way. I, I, I think this is something you need to work out with Jerry, and these are all just questions about what we have to have. And what's historic, that, like sign ordinance and great line. They have a sign ordinance and great line. So should we just set that one aside, because that's too big for like tonight's discussion, but it's just an idea. And then, and then the policies and process, we're going to have to outline some policies and processes for public buildings, and then other buildings that use public funds. I don't know, I'm just listing them, that these are things that are going to have to be done. And again, I don't, I, I talked to our wonderful attorney, Mr. Baker, at two thirty PM, and I don't think he's written them all by now. Anyway. So we agree that those are things we're going to have to settle down.
So when you say private buildings, you mean non-commercial buildings, right?
No, and they could be commercial. They can be commercial, but, but they're not owned by the city, and we don't have permission. So it seems to me there might be two different, like on the city, we can do whatever we want, but on people and other people own something.
Well, because most of the walls we're looking at are not city-owned.
So, so it's my question, do we need, do we need to have anything, or does it just go forward without?
Well, I mean, if we're not talking about public buildings, it doesn't sound like, I see, none of the ones that you presented for public buildings, that's all, correct?
Correct, that's right.
I mean, you're, you're talking about, I don't know, the, 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 for the property owner. That's not, I don't think you need an ordinance from the city to deal with that. I mean, you're kind of an individual agreement with the property owner.
So I, I do know there's some places in, there's some cities that are real, real strict, and so they write up some kind of, are you familiar with that? You're nodding, but.
Yes, a lot of Main Street cities use private property agreements, where it's the Main Street Department, or the City Council, or the city whatever organization does an agreement with that property owner, saying that they are going to paint a mural, and they kind of line out who's responsible for it, for the maintenance and things like that. So quite a few cities do it that way, because most murals are on private buildings in a historic area or in some neighborhood. So they're, they're templates for things like that, that we can adapt to Nacogdoches.
You're talking about by piece of the grid.
Yes.
The city of Georgetown has a really good example that goes into how long can the mural stay up there before the property owner? Without having the easement being renewed, when can they go and repaint over it? Because then it's kind of returned back to the property owner.
Yeah.
And who maintains it, how long, all of that. So Georgetown has a great one.
Okay, so you all are handling that. I just put it up there so that we can see those are things that are going to have to be out there.
So, but it is private property, I'm just saying, mural is just like a sign, sign, and you need permission from, from guests of the city to even put it on private.
Well, to, to, to that point, say, for example, in some cities, you see murals on electric boxes, right? In that case, that is city, right? But it's not necessarily building. So in that case, you would need an ordinance, wouldn't you, ideally?
Well, I don't know if you, that's up to Mr. Baker here. I don't know if you need, but it'd be good to have some kind of, I, I want to stick to the murals on buildings, but it'd be good to have some kind of policy about the electric stuff and all that.
But, but Mr. Bolden, one thing to your question as far as murals on private buildings, like in the downtown area. But, but Mr. Bolden, one thing to your question as far as murals on private buildings, like in the downtown area, as long as HLPC has approved painting on that surface, to my understanding, that property owner doesn't need city council or city approval, because it's not an actual sign, it's just painting side of the building, whether they're gonna do it a solid color or a mural.
All three of them, I never got approval in either of them.
So, so there are some cities that are stricter, and we're not gonna be a city like that, that's basically what we're saying, we're sticking with how we're doing.
Well, is the Historic District, you have to give us a certificate of approval to change even paint colors, isn't it?
Um, so you have to have a certificate of appropriateness, our COAs requesting to paint a surface. Um, if it's a previously painted, if it's a, you know, the side of the mayor's building, um, it's already a painted brick, that's technically ordinary maintenance, and so those things get administratively approved, um, through my office. If it's, they wanna paint the front of a brick building that's never been painted, they would have to have approval from HLPC. But if it is just, if we wanted to paint the side of City Hall, and it was a private building, you could just go ahead and paint it without any sort of approval from HLPC, because it's a painted surface.
Well.
Um, so, and HLPC in our ordinance does not regulate colors or anything like that. We suggest, um, one of two historic color palettes, but in our ordinance, there's no enforcement of, you have to pick out of these ten colors. It just more looks at, is this an appropriate surface to paint?
And, and as we get further along, there may be something that, that we say, wait a minute, maybe we should set up something stricter or something, you know, whatever. Because there are cities that are, well, you did, well, some of them are like those HOAs that, you know, that are like, chopped down the mailbox.
You get some approval of one building owner, and you put a nice mural on it, and the building next door to it goes, not no fun of that, I'll just paint my own mural. You know, can they do that? Like you said, no one has the standards, and all of a sudden they're like, whoa, here it is.
Yeah, because they're private, private.
Sort of wilting up a can of worms, possibly, I don't know.
A can of worms, I always paint that up. That would be, that would be disnegotiated, but I think they're very independent-minded.
Right, and, and, and I think Jeff Lynn's point of making it as simple as possible, when, when you start, I'll be the easiest person in the world, but some people, when you start restricting them, telling them what they're gonna do for their ability, they are going to bow, I promise you that.
Okay, so let's go on to number three, because it sounds like we're, so number three, this is something we do need to decide on. Again, to make it a collaborative process, we, we talked, um, I think Lynn and Tori, you and I talked about how to have a committee, because everybody's involved in this now. You've got Main Street, you've got a subcommittee of Main Street, you've got HLPC, you've got Parks and Rec in another capacity, I see you smiling.
I guess that's me.
But anyway, there's a lot of different people, and then you're gonna wanna bring in other people, and, and so I, I'm just gonna go out on a limb here, from what I was, I, I was gonna suggest that we have a committee, a formal committee, that is basically the mural committee. And then you pick, the, the, you then report, of course, to, to, what's the whole title?
Oh, my title?
Yeah.
Interim Community Services Director.
But then also to the City Council, and to, to shortchange, so if there's any kind, any kind, I'm sorry, it's my hands a lot. But, um, and then you include on your committee, somebody from H, uh, HLPC, and then you make sure you have on your committee, somebody from any other committee that you think is important. And then we can just appoint the committee, and, and write it into our committee's books, and then, um, that's my suggestion. But you don't, we don't have to do that, but that would be my suggestion, what do you think about that?
Prior to appointing the committee, I think, like you did at first, have an agreement before a person applies, applies to the committee, or gets put on the committee, if they agree to things, the amended things, even that would, yeah.
Great idea, make sure there are an agreement with all this stuff. And I would let you all, you know, I mean, I don't know about you, but recommend people you want, you know, on that committee, and then, then you have your own committee that is solid, you know.
I, I think we should set that aside for further discussion, because it's sort of in conflict with the proposed procedures.
So, so on the proposed procedures, instead of, what, what do you think, is this a good process that we can, that, or not?
This one?
No, the other one, the other one.
Creating a new committee?
So, yeah, so that was.
That doesn't shortchange what the committee has to do with the staff, and all of the levels of the staff, uh, process. I'm just trying to think of what the council, you know, how it, how you have, what do you think?
So, just so I'm understanding, it would be a, a separate new committee?
A standalone.
Made up of members that are appointed by council, or members of existing, like, Main Street HLPC members?
My suggestion would be that the council appoints them, but that this committee then is representative of all the other pieces. To me, that cuts through some of that red tape. And then, um, I mean, that doesn't mean that they don't have to go back to full Main Street Board, or they don't have to, you know, it would be a good idea to go to HLPC, but they don't necessarily have to go and get these approvals one at a time, or whatever.
So they would function as representatives of their respective committees?
That's true, because each one of them would be representative.
So my only concern, as far as more on my end, is the staff capacity, because reporting in our office, we already have our Main Street Advisory Board with a design committee that's kind of doing some of this function, as far as the Main Street Design Committee's coming up with the ideas, and then taking it to HLPC and Main Street, which right now, since these are mainly just downtown, since it's all living in Main Street, um, we already have those committees set up for approval. So just in, in my wheelhouse, it would be having a committee, a design committee, and have a new committee about murals, talk about it, and then they would still need to go get those approvals through the Main Street Board, HLPC, and City Council, unless you're suggesting we have the mural committee, and then they don't have to go to HLPC and Main Street, and they would go straight to council.
I'm suggesting that, if it simplifies it, and if you think that would work, that the representative they put actually represents that other committee. I, that is what I'm suggesting, to simplify it. Um, but maybe it doesn't.
Jessica, so I understand administratively, the Main Street Advisory Board is gonna be the one to recommend allocating the funds effectively.
Correct, uh, they have, so far have essentially dog-eared twenty thousand dollars for this, but then they would have to approve five thousand for this one.
We're gonna have to go to them anyway, HLPC has a mandate to make sure that our historic landmarks are preserved, and so it's really gonna have to go to them too, so we're actually, this would actually add another layer in the bureaucracy.
Yeah.
Just because it's gonna have to go to those others anyway before it comes to you.
Okay.
Is that, am I right?
Yes, yeah, as far as from the, the staff side of the, the channels we have to run it through to get the funding, the appropriateness, and then City Council approval on it, it has to go through those anyway.
I just need to done a thing, look for my.
Yes, sorry.
Can you, can you include in this, but you have a little functioning, you have a functioning mural committee, right?
We have.
So our, our mural committee is pretty much the same people that is on the design committee, so it's kind of used interchangeably, um, that, that name has been tossed back and forth, so.
So my suggestion is, in the early stages, so part of this is, you want any kind of disagreement or major question or whatever to come up as early as possible. So my suggestion is that when you're talking about murals, you have a designated person from H, uh, H, H LPC as part, I guess that's part of it. And if there's some other entity that, that, you already have Main Street covered, but I guess it's mostly HLPC. So I would bring them in, in all the discussions.
And we, we can definitely do that, uh, the design committee, the way the Main Street Board is set up, is of course, we have our Main Street Advisory Board that's, um, appointed by council, and then we have our four committees that meet for the four pillars of Main Street, that are a Main Street America and a Texas thing as well. Um, and so our design committee is made up of several of our Main Street Advisory Board members, um, and then other members of the community that, like Lynn and McCandlesses, and Brandon, that are, um, very excited, Brandon's on our committee, just kidding, um, that are very excited about murals and other things, and it is somewhat fluid, as far as, you know, we have five or six members that come in and out when their time allows, uh, but we can invite a member of HLPC to, to join the design committee and come sit in on some of the discussions. So that's, since it's kind of a fluid committee, that's, that's not hard to do.
Okay, and so your fluid committee is my suggestion, that since they're the ones who are thinking through all this, that they also be a contact point for, for City Council. Because what you don't want to do is go through all this process and then come all the way to the end, so City Council, let me go, huh? You know, that's not, that's the last thing we're willing to do, you wanna have a collaborative stream without.
Communication.
Yes, communication, without bargaining.
You know, there's one last thing at the end of the statement, which says it does not review colors, design imagery, or wording, so it's like, okay, you can do all of this, and then we're gonna negate it, and they can do anything they want, and that just seems to be the way it reads, is that the way it reads?
On, on which part are you?
This one right here, at the very last sentence. Oh, you're talking about.
Oh. Yeah, well, this is.
No, no, I'm still, oh.
But as, as far as to the note, and Mr. Maul, Councilman Maul's front of the last bullet point on my mural process, um, so any of the, the murals would come before HLPC to say, yes, that is an appropriate place to paint a mural, um, as far as if it's a painted or unpainted surface. But HLPC, by our city ordinance, cannot review, or cannot approve, they can look at the colors and the design, and they can give opinions on, I love this mural, I hate this mural, um, but in our ordinance and how they're set up, there's no way for them to regulate the color, the design, imagery, or the wording. So they would review it as far as, can you paint here, or can you not paint here, and they can give opinions, but they can't say, we don't like it, because it's purple, so we're gonna deny it. Um, they can only approve or deny based on the surface that's being painted.
Who was like it or disliked it, approved it or denied it all the time?
City Council, is, which is.
That's what she's trying to, in a, in a moment where all these things happen, and you're like, oh, here we are, we've done all this work, and everybody goes, whoa. Isn't, you know, and it's, oh, and these are just four or five individuals, they don't know everything. But I think there would probably be a collective grade, or mm, or uh-oh, or, I just, that word is.
Okay, so how about if we modify, we don't need to appoint them if you have them, but, but you tell us who these people are.
Okay.
Let us know who they are, you include an HLPC member, because it, you know, in, in, in their capacity on this committee, they should say, wait a minute, you know, the color black is, is a total inappropriate thing for our history here. And they, you know, they can give their opinion to, because you want every, you, you want to avoid all the snags, you know, and I'm just trying to envision snags.
Just, just to clarify, uh, now, whenever it says determine appropriateness, now, you, I know you were just using an example, but you said, for example, the color black, right? It does say they can't review colors, right? So in what case would something be deemed inappropriate or appropriate, just the location?
As far as when we're talking about HLPC approval and review, yes, it is, is this side of the building currently painted, then it's appropriate, you can repaint. If it's a brick building that is not currently painted, then that's up to HLPC to determine the appropriateness of that. Usually if it's unpainted brick, it is usually denied, because then you can't take that paint back off of it, and at least not very easily, without damaging the brick to a horrible extent.
You mean usually, is it always?
As far as the HLPC approval, I would have to go back and look at the statistics, and don't quote me on it, but I would probably say ninety-eight percent of the time, they have denied painting unpainted brick. Um, just because, especially with our old brick in downtown Nakadoches, it's an older form of brick, that if you cover it with paint, it no longer breathes, and then it falls apart behind it. Um, so I would probably say, and once again, don't quote me, but it's somewhere in the nineties where they do not approve painting unpainted brick.
So.
But again, it's not based on the color, it's just.
So my suggestion, my suggestion, once again, is you get a member from HLPC who's a total functioning member, who can question colors, who can do whatever, get a member, um, because you want a collaborative structure rather than just authoritarian structure. You're going through these structures, they have to approve, they have to approve, they're not denying, you want collaboration at that little place, and you're missing HLPC, and that's all we're suggesting.
Does HLPC?
And so we, we can take out a point like council, but I think your, your group should, we shouldn't come back to council on a regular basis, instead of report, that may be a bad.
So, like on a regular schedule?
Yeah, something like this is where we are now, you know, and that can be decided, but you, again, we, it's not just who we are, I, I have all those other people who call me, and I can help head off a problem. You know, if, if, if I know that some people are way oversensitive to, you know, some issue, um, Mr. Bolden, he will have his voters and people, he, he represents who may be sensitive. We, we, we have a, you know, um, a lot of people, Chad, or his work is all kinds of people, yes.
What you're saying is, if the ideas are communicated to us, before it comes to us for approval, it'll make things a lot easier.
Absolutely.
That way we're not impacted, and, and we're all just going in the same direction.
Yeah, and, and as far as the mural procedure that we put in there, we kind of followed the same saying that a lot of our boards do, where they vote on it, and it's taken to City Council for final approval, but of course, in here, it's got a big draft watermark on there. So if there's any specific, you know, timeframes where, you know, once the design committee is good with it, City Council would like to review it before it goes to the next board, any of those can absolutely be built in here.
So why don't you suggest them?
Okay.
And build it in.
Okay.
And we'll just have, and then, okay, one more? Uh, so I think we're good with that, we'll take that other one in, we're all good with how we're doing, okay, funding, um, I think, again, these are principles. And as much as possible, we're trying to get private funding, and the donors named in the same way for each mural, and that gets back to how you put your plaque, right? Am I messing up on this at all?
Yep.
No, that's good, okay. And when using city dollars, it is approved through the committee process, and hopefully, I would like to put that in there, that those city dollars are used to draw grant dollars. I would love matching dollars whenever possible, and if we can do that. And then clarify the use of raised dollars, um, so we know in advance, so for example, if we know the wine swirl's gonna go to murals, we're not there. That, this is, this year, the wine swirl dollars are gonna go to murals, or ten percent of the wine swirl dollars, or whatever, just clarify the dollars, and then report back the dollars where, where they came from.
That's it.
Are we all on agreement on this one?
Yeah.
The slide, okay, now we get to the immediate steps, because I know that you all want to get some murals out there right away. So, um, if we all agree with the philosophy, and we've written this, and then Jessica, you're gonna come back with the edited, right?
Yes.
And, and you can just give, I, I don't think we need to have a, a council meeting, I mean, if you, if you just email it to us all, the edited thing, uh, do, what do y'all want to do, council? Do you wanna go over it, or just wanna have it in emails, and we say, I, I, that's not what I said in an email, or?
So I think we're sort of giving our blessing tonight, and Jessica's just writing that out, if there were big changes, then we come back and say, okay, this is not really what we were thinking. I mean, I'm, I'm happy for us to approve it, but.
But I think, I think what we, what, but we do want to, it'll go like a handbook or something on, that we can pass out, this is what we agreed on, this is the philosophy, so we're gonna have to look at the final.
Any, there can be a little approval tonight.
Right, I don't know, we're not.
You can handle this one in your way, if you need it, just an administrative process that you, that incorporates all these things, what we have administrative processes that cover thousands of things that we do as a city, or that don't necessarily have to be a board handbook or a resolution or ordinance, so we can do it in any version of that, if you can.
And thank you for saving me, clarifying what I'm trying to say, so.
Just whatever you wanted to.
Just what you are.
And, and that's what we're doing, we're, we're giving directions now.
So, what I would propose to Jessica and her team work on, um, getting this, getting this, um, on paper, and then send it out to the committee, to everybody that's here tonight, just to take a look at it, and thank you for seeing comments out, and if you see something that you don't like or don't understand, or, or doesn't jive a follow with your notes, because Robert's made a lot of that super good, um, then, then she can incorporate that, and we'll, we'll just kind of flesh that out by email, if that's okay.
Okay, and so we don't need to do that, here's my question, what do we need to do to allow the murals, what, Lynn, what are we looking at for the October stuff? What is it you're trying to do, and what do we, what do you want from us, so that it can go fast?
What, which one do we have?
I think the Garden Capital of Texas is the easiest one.
Okay, and the Garden Capital looks, I mean, do we need, what do we want to see before that Garden Capital?
It's the one with your name across it that we're gonna paint.
I would love some flowers in there.
What would be a timeline to get a mural like that mission completed? What reasonable?
Probably two to three months, at least.
I was talking over to y'all today. I was talking over to Yelson.
Go ahead.
You've already engaged Dixie, or talked with her, um, there are other artists here in town who are probably willing to do a, a mock-up, scale drawing for that wall, we don't have to have it finished by the time this, uh, city group gets here, but if we're underway, and have scaffolding up, and show them that we're doing that, it's, it's, it's a real boon to us, it's a feather in our cap to do that.
Let me say this, with, with all due respect, Dixie, I, I love her, I mentioned this to her three, four months ago, and I have a report from this, so, you know, all I need is how much money can Michael have speed, that's what I'm.
I'll let you know.
That's, that's what I need to know, that's gonna be.
I think.
Yeah, you actually, yeah, some of our hiccup is if, of course, if we're spending over three thousand dollars in city funds, we will have to do a public, essentially a request for qualifications, where artists send in their qualifications, we select them, and then contract with them to actually do the painting, so we can do.
We'll never get that, we'll never get that done by October, though.
How much, just ballpark, how much do you think on that?
If I'm doing it?
No.
He doesn't get on that, it's normally twenty dollars a square foot.
It's normally twenty bucks a square foot, but.
I think square feet.
I, I think for, for, I just wanna say, I think for a start-out, if we can use someone local to draw up and approve the drawing, that will, a scale drawing that will go on that wall, it could be executed.
He's dying to get a paintbrush.
Seven, eight, seven or eight thousand, I mean, I'm.
Then I'll tell you one, I'll, okay?
Twelve?
I'll pay four, I'm not gonna pay four either.
You, that, the size, the size of that mural is, you know, can be done for ten thousand, twelve thousand.
Okay, I'll pay four, just.
We get it going.
I don't want anybody to say, oh, I'll pay four.
Can I bring up one thing with that, then? No, no, I was just asking, 'cause that. Yeah, 'cause that, that does bring up something, if you mentioned that you are going to pay for the whole thing, that essentially takes our city staff and this entire process, other than HLPC approval, it takes us completely out of it, um, so, you know, we can do the mural philosophy and think, and that stuff's great, but if you, as a private citizen, are paying for the whole thing on your building, that, that takes some of these steps out of it, which is not a bad thing.
It was being in the process.
You need to say, these are, these are our parameters, this is what we wanna do, and I get all of this.
So, I don't think we really should pay for the whole thing, I think we should approach the garden clubs.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Give people a garden.
And even.
I don't have time to go past.
No, you're not, we are.
We did, we, we will, we will.
Whatever y'all can do, then find, but what I'm telling you, to get this project and, and to be a project, we can be all be proud of, and it be the first project, that's the gateway, our city from the west, from the north, from the south.
Look, yeah, look what has happened on North and, uh, Main Street, wouldn't we like to do that with our building? We've got our, we've got people raising funds, do that, won't we do that, it, you know, a, kind of a contagion.
Okay, so, what do we, what do you wanna get done by October, then, how come?
I have a question, so if the committee here designs it, comes up with the painting, are you the only one who needs to approve it, since it's your wall?
Well, so legally.
No, I'm sitting, just ask.
Legally, you got one thing, but if it's a collaborative thing, the whole city, my suggestion is, you bring it back to the city, and you have input, and you, and we all kind of discuss it, you know, we have to, everyone under watch, but I'm just telling you, is a collaborative strategy, that works the best.
Whatever we have to do to get, uh, just do that, whatever steps we have to go through, I'm just telling you, um, give me the.
He can have a design within five days.
Are there other artists in the audience who would be willing to come up with a scale drawing of what would be on that wall, of the littering and things, I mean, if, if we got two or three people, two or three pieces that would go on the wall, from different, uh, different arts organizations and things, do that, then we could present it, and what, rather than one person.
I wanna get it, I think, about what's gonna go on that, which could walk, my suggestion is, you bring it back to the council, the draft, and we do real quickly, and informally we have to, but we look at, um.
You wanna go on the night thing?
Is that something that the Main Street Board is bringing, I'm just trying to clarify, that y'all are wanting the Main Street Board to bring back, because if it's, again, if it's a privately paid for and painted and designed mural, then Main Street doesn't necessarily have a part in it, the design committee can help and advise, but.
So I'm suggesting that that committee play this role of liaison with the city council, and that that committee bring back the, their thoughts in whatever the sketches and everything, and then, I, I mean, I know there's not a legal, but this helps keep the whole city together, and it, it helps with the continuity, it helps with all the collaboration.
So would this be for every single mural, or just?
I, I just, yeah, for all of us, and then we head off any time.
He said he's trying to be in tux with Dix, Dix, right?
So any privately funded mural, make sure we need to review before it's being approved by city council?
And then he's paying for it.
Even if it's privately funded.
Main, Main Street, no.
No, we would bring it to y'all.
Yeah, anything that we're working on, that's part of our city's, what, what it's called, you know, shape, brushing up now, I suggest.
But that would only apply to things that are being funded publicly.
My suggestion, it's not my requirement, my suggestion is, everybody's better off, if you go ahead and just bring them all, if you're involved with it, bring it, and then that's, and you don't have to, I'm just, that's just my suggestion, now, if it's problem funding, then obviously.
So the timeframe we're talking about, if we're going to use the process, we're gonna have to take it from now.
Well, are we gonna, they, they.
Yeah, yeah, you would. Well, I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm dealing with some bureaucracies right now, nothing's getting done, but.
There's nothing that, that says you can't just bring it to all the different city council members, and that's where we are, and you can do it in different.
Because it's a private mural, we do want to include everyone in on it, but we can shortstop things and focus on, it needs to be started middle of October, or the second week in October, and we just focus on that, and everybody get together and get, you know, choose, choose one of the drawings, if we've got more than one or two or three drawings, find out what it wants, wants to be done, and figure out a way of getting it on the wall.
Okay.
Yeah, and as far as the mural philosophy and things like that, like we mentioned, I think we can put together, you know, here's kind of our ideas and the cohesive, you know, thoughts behind murals we want downtown, and give that to private property owners, and say, you suggest you follow this, same thing we do with the historic color palette, but if it's, if it's privately funded and Main Street's not doing it, then we're just suggesting, here's what you go with, but, you know, if the mayor's hiring whoever on his own, he can kinda do what he wants, but we would hope that he would follow kinda this game plan.
I just, I just told him, uh, you gotta have less than one in.
Or a.
Or anything, whatever you gotta do, you know, you'll have the money.
Thanks for any.
People, or me, or whoever, you know.
So you, you all can propose what you wanna propose, I mean, I'm just telling you, more, more included, early on, more property, and sometimes taking a little more time upfront, so a long time.
Yeah, we haven't got a lot of time on this, and we'd, we knew you'd kick something off, but it was like, like Cowboy Jacks, you wanna do something, uh, with the conquistadors or the, you know, Mexican history, you go to that person, and you say, you know, we're thinking about doing Mexican history here on the wall, and we're gonna be sending out for, for entries of people who, you know, artists around town, who would, you know, wanted, you include them in the choice of the murals of what's to be done, and, uh.
Well, I, this is, this is all I wanted to do, and I feel like we accomplished it, that we set a vision, that we actually had, um, looked at our principles, our philosophy, we clarified at least our involvement in the process, and the, who might, who you might wanna include at a different points, and, um, I'm having.
Are you happy? You having it, I'm happy, I'm honored, okay. Are you happy?
You have.
I'm glad I have that information before I got it. I like what you presented, I mean, it's, it's great, so, I mean, you know, the public will tell you, once you do that first mural, they're gonna go, thumbs up, thumbs down, that's gonna be your answer.
We'll make it this.
That about there, you're gonna kickstart your whole project.
It will, no pressure. Not, not everybody be happy, we're gonna shoot for ninety percent, we're gonna make a, a, a nice, nice space that would, uh, you know, would bring people in.
Well, I always say, watch your work, I admire people, I am so grateful for everything you've done, and I know we all want to help, and anyway.
You know, Robert, I, I, I tried for, and I think I shared this with you, the, the other two walls were light, I had them LED, and.
Yeah.
But I tried for years to get somebody interested in painting that west wall, place in the courthouse, nobody would even talk to me about it, and Tyson Davis showed up one day, my son was a student, he said, I can paint that wall, you know, so, I turned up to him, he said, well, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, well, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, but anyway, he did, and he, he believed, he worked his turn, and I think Dixie was involved in it, Giovanni was involved in it, several people.
Yeah.
Or we could put some big lips with a tongue thing, I don't wanna do that, you know.
Wrong, it is you do that.
I just, I, I just keep telling people, you know, I, I, I want some governance on what is put up, I don't wanna drive through town and find a picture of Marilyn Monroe on the side of a building, which is, you know.
Okay, are we good?
I'm good.
I know.
Mm-hmm, I think we have some direction. Yes, sir?